Owatonna City Council Meeting for Tuesday, March 21st, 2017 to order. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Burbank.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
Spenvy.
Here.
Voss.
Here.
Okerberg.
Here.
Dotson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Mayor Coons.
Here.
We have all seven of the council and the mayor present.
Would all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and the reminder to please remove your hat in the chambers.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to a beautiful night in Owatonna. The first thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and there are two changes. On the consent agenda items, 2.2.4 and 2.2.5, two event permits have been removed and they'll be dealt with at a later meeting. So I look at our motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve as noted.
Motion by Brent to approve the agenda as noted. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We don't have any public hearings or a mayor's report tonight, so go direct to Vice President Rainey for the finance report.
Thank you. Checks for over $20,000 tonight are as follows. $600,000 to Dyken Applied Americas, that's the deed grant pass-through. $22,268 to Have Fuel Corp. for airport fuel. $62,038 to Winona Mechanical, that is for the Bridge Street lift station. Other expenditures tonight are $218,240 for a total expenditure tonight of $902,547.50.
Thank you, Kevin. I look for a motion on the finance report.
Motion to approve the paid bills.
Motion by Jeff to approve the finance report. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now go on to the consent agenda, and that is a number of items including minutes, permits and licenses, board and commission minutes and reports, other monthly reports and contracts. They are all put together as one item and the council has reviewed it prior to the meeting. So I look for a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Motion by Nate to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Any further discussion? Brent.
May I note my involvement with the event permit from the heart.
So noted. Any other discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. We now go on to the action items. First one is, under contracts and agreements, is 3.1.1, the fire hall roof and masonry assessment from Adset Architecture and Planning, and we'll go to Corky.
They've met with the Adset.
Could you come up to the microphone, Corky?
Good evening. So yeah, we're ready to go to approve the contract. They've met with the firm that's going to do the architecture planning and masonry assessment for the fire hall roof, and so we're ready to award that contract to the low bid.
Thank you, Corky. Any questions of Corky on this matter?
And I should point out that our city attorney has reviewed and approved that agreement. There was a few minor changes made.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
Motion approved.
Motion by Kevin to approve a fire hall roof and masonry assessment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is 3.2.1, tobacco permit from Teresa School Meister doing business as Mojo Smokes and Accessories at 214 North Cedar Avenue, and we'll go to Chris for a report on this.
Thank you, Greg. What we're looking for is council consideration to approve an application received from Teresa for a tobacco license to do business as Mojo Smokes. Downtown Tobacco was previously at this location and is now relocated next door. The applicant worked at the downtown tobacco location and now has opened for business as Mojo Smokes and Accessories at this site. The store has been open selling accessories, and now she wants to add pouch tobacco sales. This license will expire at the end of the current licensing period in December. A background check was completed. Chief Hiller has advised he has no objections to the issuance of this license. Budget impact, we have received a $100 fee for the background search, and then the tobacco license fee will be remitted of $125, so staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions of Chris or comments?
Motion approved.
Motion by Nate to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Any further discussion? Or excuse me.
Dave.
I was looking at you, Doug. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now move on to resolutions and ordinances. The first item is 3.3.1, Resolution 21-17, to amend the 2016 budget, and we'll go to Rhonda for this.
The 2016 budget year ended with positive results. The revenues and expenditures both exceeded the budgeted amounts, and because the council appropriates all expenditures, it's necessary to amend the budget for all those expenditures that were in excess of budget. When the budget was initially approved by the council, it was a plan for the year, and events and circumstances oftentimes change, which require the city to alter its plans. Some examples of those changes include flood damage due to the September rain event, an increase in building permit activity, awarding of grants, retirements of long-term employees, and the transfer of funds. Staff would recommend approval of this resolution.
Okay, thank you, Rhonda. Any questions of Rhonda on this matter? There being none, I'd look for a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution 21-17.
Motion by Brent to approve Resolution 21-17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is 3.3.2, Resolution 22-17, opposition to small cell wireless legislation, and we'll go to Chris for this.
Thank you, Greg. We've been informed by the League of Minnesota Cities that there has been some legislation introduced by private wireless and cellular service providers that would allow unregulated access into the city's public rights of way. They want to install these small cell wireless equipment and antenna systems. This legislation would supersede our current zoning ordinances and comprehensive plans that have been in place for years. The legislation provides for automatic approval, would not allow for cities to consider the effects on public health, safety, and aesthetics. So staff would recommend approval of Resolution 22-17.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Any questions of Chris on this matter?
Can you tell us what small cell wireless means?
Well, my understanding is that, you know, there's something similar by the high school. It's sometimes like a coffee can type of thing. Sometimes they're much bigger antennas, and they're used to boost signals throughout the cities, so.
My understanding, we're not opposed to these things or opposed to...
Just giving them blanket approval.
Letting them just do whatever they want in the city right of way.
Right. And in fact, we had, Mark Fritsch from OPU had worked with, I believe it was Verizon, for installing a wireless site. But, you know, they talked about it, they worked with us, you know, we had some considerations in regards to location and pool size and where it was placed. So I mean, we do work with these providers. It's just, we're opposed to having the providers have an open access to our public right of way without us, without the city having any say over it.
Thank you, Chris. Any further questions of Chris? Look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jeff to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we move on to item 3.3.3, Resolution 23-17. It's a fee adjustment for the right-of-way ordinance, and we'll go to Kyle for this.
Good evening. Back in May of 2016, we passed a new right-of-way ordinance clarifying our right to manage the right-of-way within the city, and as part of that, we implemented some fees for permits. What we hadn't considered at the time we put the fees in was the Jaguar overlay that's occurring in town. They're planning a little over 94,000 feet of construction this year, and the fees that we had were set up for small maintenance-type work. So, and also I've met with Jaguar, and you know, when they initially had their franchise agreement, there were no fees, so they didn't really budget anything in for this. So, but we do have some costs associated with the project. We're looking at hiring a temporary right-of-way inspector for the summer, and that position's at $12 an hour, which costs us about $15 an hour. So we're figuring 20 hours per week at the $15 an hour for 12 weeks, and then if they extended beyond that, it would be per week. So we're recommending a base fee of $3,600 for Jaguar for 2017, and if their large construction project goes over that, we would invoice them for the additional weeks. And I have talked to them about these fees, and they are in agreement.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Any questions of Kyle on this matter?
Motion approved.
Motion by Kevin to approve this resolution. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now move on to proposed ordinance, 3-17, to amend Appendix A for the right-of-way fees. We'll go back to you, Kyle.
When we enacted that ordinance, as I mentioned, we had fees that were borrowed from other communities since we didn't have a history of what our costs would be. As some permits have come in, we've noticed that one of the portions of the fee, which is the trenching permit, is rather high, and we're recommending that instead of $75 per 100 feet or 75 cents per foot, that that be revised to $20 per 100 feet or 20 cents per linear foot. We don't know the total budget impact, we don't know what footage the other companies will be putting in, but we feel this is a more appropriate fee.
Okay, good. Thank you, Kyle. Any questions of Kyle? There being none, I'd look for a motion.
Motion approved.
Motion by Nate to approve ordinance.
Second.
Second by Brent. This is an ordinance, so we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Spenvy.
Aye.
Voss.
Aye.
Okerberg.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
Motion carries. This will go into effect upon publication. The next item is 3.3.5, Proposed Ordinance 4-17, to vacate a portion of drainage and the utility easements in Country Creek Number 6, and I think the conversation will also include the next item, Resolution 24-17, preliminary plat for Country Creek Number 7, and we'll go to Troy for this.
Yeah, so the next two gen items relate to the replat for Country Creek Number 6. This is a request by Malcolm Hall of Hall Construction to replat eight town home units in one single-family lot into six town home units and two lots. Basically, the reason for this is to go from the side-by-side townhomes, four of those different buildings, to six single-family townhome units and then two single-family lots. And we're seeing a trend in that direction to go from the side-by-side townhomes with a common wall to the single-family townhome units and not being adjoining to any other unit. So in the first request for the vacation of the easements, there were some existing easements on the plat that related to the old townhome lots. The best way to do this is really just to clean the slate of the utility easements and then replat the new ones in. So the first request is really just to vacate those utility and drainage easements that exist currently where the plat is being replatted. There would not be any changes to the street right-of-way or the stormwater or any of the utilities. It's really just a replat. They're going to use the existing stub ends. There is some outstanding assessments that would need to be paid at the conclusion of the plat. This would be a preliminary plat approval. It did go to Planning Commission. We did not have any comment from any of the neighbors from that, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval of both the vacation as well as preliminary plat of Country Creek Number 7.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions of Troy on this matter? In that case, we all go in to, or do we have to do the Proposed Ordinance 4-17 to vacate a portion of the drainage and utility easements in Country Creek Number 6? Do I have a motion for that?
Motion approved.
Motion by Kevin to approve that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff. This again is an ordinance, so we'll have to have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Spenvy.
Aye.
Voss.
Aye.
Okerberg.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
Motion carries, so this will go into effect. The next part of this is Resolution 24-17, the preliminary plat for the new Country Creek Number 7. Any questions about this for Troy?
Motion approved.
Motion by Kevin to approve Resolution 24-17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is, it kind of involves the next three items, 3.3.7, the Proposed Ordinance 5-17, to rezone the Pool property in the 1700 block of East School Street. That also includes to vacate a portion of School Street and a preliminary plat, and we'll go to Troy.
Yeah, so again, one topic, three different requests here. We have a request by Tom and Jackman Pool to vacate some easements, to rezone the property, and then to replat it. We have had a piece of property on the east end of town. It was owned I-2 Industrial, a vacant piece of property off of School Street in Maine, and does have some wetlands on the property. The Pools purchased the property and would like to build a house on it as well as a shop. The shop, the size of the shop would not fit within a residential district, and therefore want to keep the I-2 zoning for that Lot 1. The Outlet A and Lot 2 would then be rezoned to the R-1 single-family zoning. The house would be built on Lot 1. Again, with the replat, we'd like to vacate any utilities and right-of-way. As part of this plat, it does take the south side of the right-of-way of School Street from the center of the road, 33 feet. That'll be included in the plat. As part of the project, the applicant would need to extend utilities from the corner of Partridge and School Street all the way to the house on Lot 2 as part of the project. So we had it go to the Planning Commission. There was no comment from any of the neighbors relative to any of the three requests, and so the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the vacation of the utility easements, the rezoning of the properties of Outlet A and Lot 2 to R-1 single-family, and then the preliminary plat of Pool Edition.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions of Troy on this matter?
I got a question, Troy. Why was that in a heavy industrial district in the first place? Was there plans at one time for out there?
I think a long time ago, I mean, we had some manufacturing, still do have some manufacturing out there along Main Street. This is back when Main Street was a much busier arterial.
Still Highway 14.
Into town, right? So, and I think it was owned by someone that had plans to do industrial down the road, but that never materialized. And as the industrial park developed, we saw all of our industrial kind of gravitate to that end of town.
Further questions? Being none, this requires three action items. The first is the Proposed Ordinance 5-17 to rezone the Pool property in the 1700 block of East School Street. And what are the council's wishes on this?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jeff to approve. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Doug. Any further discussion? This being ordinance, we'll ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Spenvy.
Aye.
Voss.
Aye.
Okerberg.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
All seven ayes. First reading.
Thank you. This was a first reading.
They're all first readings, yes.
All first readings, so. Okay, the next item is Proposed Ordinance 6-17, to vacate a portion of School Street East. What are the council's wishes on this?
Motion to approve ordinance.
Motion by Brent to approve ordinance, Proposed Ordinance 6-17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff. Any further discussion? There being none, again, this is an ordinance, so we'll ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Spenvy.
Aye.
Voss.
Aye.
Okerberg.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
All seven ayes. First reading.
Approved for the first reading. The next item is Resolution 25-17, which is the preliminary plat for the Pool Edition. Any further discussion on this?
Motion approved.
Motion by Kevin to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? Nate?
Anyone here for this item? All right, well, I'll be your neighbor, so welcome to the neighborhood.
Good luck with that.
And sorry.
All as well, okay. There being no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item is 3-3.3.10, Proposed Ordinance 7-17, to vacate a portion of Mineral Springs Parkway. That also includes a resolution for the preliminary plat for Mineral Springs Parkway. And since I'm a principal owner in this property, I'm going to recuse myself and turn the meeting over to Vice President Rainey.
Okay, thank you. And I will go to Troy on this.
Okay, again, the next two items relate to the preliminary plat of Mineral Springs Parkway Edition. Again, vacate a portion of Mineral Springs Parkway. And if you've followed the development along Mineral Springs Parkway, you know Mineral Springs Parkway has had a right-of-way of 99 feet. We've vacated portions of that right-of-way along either side as property has been developed. This just coincides with that same logic of just maintaining the right-of-way that we need for that. So the first request is really just vacating that portion of Mineral Springs Parkway that's beyond what's needed for the roadway. The preliminary plat of Mineral Springs Parkway Edition is a five-lot plat. It fronts onto Mineral Springs Parkway. There are, there is some wetlands within the property. Those have been delineated, and effort's been made to avoid any development along those wetlands there. It would be, again, a five-lot plat, and utilities would be brought in off the backside of the lots and be serviced that way. We did go to Planning Commission. Planning Commission did recommend approval. We did have a number of neighbors there that had some concerns, mostly around drainage in that area, and some of the issues that they've experienced, and I think we might have some neighbors here that may want to speak to that as well. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of both the vacation of the right-of-way as well as the preliminary plat of Mineral Springs Parkway Edition.
Thank you, Troy. Yeah, we typically do not open this up for comment. That being said, tonight with the people that are here, we will open it up. Council did receive the notes from the Planning Commission in our packet, so council has all read that. What we ask is if you do have a comment, come up, sign your name right there. Keep it to two minutes, and we also ask that you don't duplicate the comments. Keep it going, and with that, I will open up to citizen comment.
My name is Steve Schickling. I'll go ahead and put this down, but I brought up some photos from, our biggest concern that I'm going to speak about is, I guess, the water aspect of it. In the back portion of my lot, I'm at 1335 Ridge, there's a little creekway that's been there since we moved in in 1992. The property directly north of me, where the Pensas live, we actually used to have ducks swimming in that property. There's water continually in there. I think the pictures were brought up. I brought some other ones for that, in that I took some this winter where we've actually got water that's flowing through that creekway. Last September, when we had the second storm, I wasn't home. I'm gone a lot on business. Decents who live up at the end of the block had actually had their car flooded that night. I believe the city was called to come and look at it. This one is kind of hard to tell. I'll leave these with the council, in that she shot this to the south. I'm two houses down from them, and I had water 10 feet up into my front yard. It was coming around, Pensas' house was an island, and I guess our biggest concern with this is that if the waterway is affected in too much, and we have what we, you know, we used to consider 100-year rains, now that are coming every six months during the summertime, that we could end up with a water issue in our property, in our basement. I know in the June rain, when I was home, I could have probably floated my boat in the backyard. So I guess my biggest concern with the whole thing is the water issue and the drainage, which we've experienced in other areas of this city over the course of, you know, some past history, and just want to make sure that we're on record with that. So Tom, I think you had something on as well.
While we're waiting, Kyle, there were mitigating circumstances in regards to why we had the water with last summer's rain event. Is that correct?
I believe we were working on the intersection at the time. It may have had the grates plugged. When that was, I have a lengthy note in the packet about it, but when that was designed, it wasn't designed to today's standards, but the drainage actually goes in a pipe to the south along Ridge Road. It doesn't go through this property. There is an overflow through this property, and we have requested a drainage easement along that as part of this plat. So we would be gaining an easement through the drainage down through this plat.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Tom Harrison. I live at 1305 Ridge Road. I'm a neighbor of Steve's and a number of the other guests that are here this evening. They've asked me to speak about another aspect regarding the property that we're all concerned about. There's a very significant stand of trees, both coniferous and deciduous along the property line that forms really the eastern property line of all of our properties, and the coniferous trees are significant in that they're quite tall, they're Norway pines, and they're sort of an attribute to our properties, the deciduous trees that line that property line as well. Add significant aesthetic and value really to our properties. And so we'd ask that when the council is considering the plating of the property and the easements for the utilities, that respect for those trees and the respect for the value that they add to both our properties and then the prospective properties that'll be going in there gets due consideration. So, thank you.
I live at 1345 Ridge Road, and I just wanted to address the question here that Councilmember Rainey asked of Public Works Director. The idea that the last flooding event, there was roadwork being done, and that caused the drain to overflow, was at the contention there. There was roadwork being done at the time, as I recall, but I've lived at the property for three and a half years. for three and a half years, and that drain, I can't, of course, speak to how big that drain should be, but it's flooded at least twice since I've lived at the house. So, that was not the only time that that drain has backed up, just to address that, that you mentioned as a mitigating concern. That was not a single event. Because of that, I would say it wasn't related to the roadwork. The roadwork probably wasn't a great idea at that time, but it's happened before.
Thank you. Kyle, just to make sure I understand, you said earlier now with the new property, we have a drainage right, or what was the term you used?
It really won't affect the drainage from that intersection.
Okay.
The drainage doesn't go through this property. It follows Ridge Road to the south. I can't speak to that pipe being the correct size, but this won't affect it.
Okay. I was up there yesterday, and that intersection is kind of odd. For some reason, it's lower than everything, but there's a lot of drains, so I don't know if you can put bigger pipes on those drains?
It is a poor design.
Oh, good.
But, you know, it's really not affected by this.
Okay.
When these properties are developed, obviously, they have to conform to all the stormwater requirements. Do you anticipate there being enough area there to deal with, to handle any additional runoff?
So, there's two stormwater... Main stormwater regulations. There's the construction stormwater permit, which requires an acre or more of new impervious surface. As we've calculated it, this will not create a new acre, so it won't be necessary for permanent, for the construction stormwater permit. However, there is total suspended solids, or TSS, and total phosphorus reduction required as part of our MS-4 permit, which is the city's stormwater permit. So, there's kind of two different regulations. It meets the requirements for our stormwater permit, the MS-4 permit, but not for the construction stormwater permit. So, that will be addressed. It'll likely be addressed on the individual lots, either through landscaping or rain garden or something like that.
Good evening. Kim Cousins, 1295 Ridge Road. I just want to address the issue in regard to whether utilities will come from the back part of the property. A good portion of that will come directly through our property and through where our property connects back there. We've got two large culverts back there. Again, lots of trees that are back there. My main concern is that those trees be maintained, because it does add value to our property. It does create a separation between us and other development. I'm certainly not against development. I just would like to make sure that no trees are taken down in this process. Thank you. And there's a lot of us here, so I would ask all of us that are affected over on Ridge Road just to stand, so you know there's maybe more people than you heard tonight speak. Would you all stand? Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Any questions from the council? Brent?
Question for Troy. Lot 3 on the preliminary plat, it shows a driveway crossing utilizing an existing crossing, and then he notices wetlands on both sides of that driveway. So, will those wetlands be delineated, so the... Any driveway put in will not encroach into those wetlands?
Maybe I'll have John Schulthe, who's the engineer on the project, come up and speak a little bit to that.
Thank you, council. Direct answer to your question is yes, absolutely, and that will be directed by city staff, I'm sure, during the site plan process. There's actually two wetland crossings. Well, one we're crossing... The one you're speaking of is... There's already a crossing there, so we're going to maintain that existing fill, or cross over that existing fill. And then there'll be a second one. I think it's between lots 4 and 5 will actually cross wetland. And in order to do that, we're going to create as little disturbance as possible in order to fall under the de minimis exemption for doing any mitigation or anything like that. And I've already looked at that as far as grades and slopes, and that's been addressed in the preliminary plat. So, it's documented, so that when these individual site plans come through, staff can review, go back to the preliminary plat, confirm that plan's been followed.
How do we document that for the future? Like, someone buys a house, there are 10 years from now they want to go out there, and they start filling in those areas because they don't know it's a wetland. So, how do we notify property owners that that's a wetland, and they can't disturb those areas?
There's a couple of ways. One is right on the plat, there's a statute to show wetlands, which is not jurisdictional wetlands, but state statute says basically that if the surveyor gets his boots wet on the property, he needs to show that it's wet. There's a second statute, that's the Wetland Conservation Act, that requires wetland delineations. That can be included in other documents, but it cannot be on the final plat, so it could be as a deed restriction or something like that. But honestly, the best way for this to be followed up on is through the city's site plan process, through your engineering staff, because the process that you've instituted now, with especially residential plats going forward, is really to detail the grading in wetland-type features and erosion control and that sort of thing on the plat, so that it's much simpler for following staff to just pick up a site plan of one lot and go back to that plat and check that. And that's exactly what we're doing at North Bluff Estates, Number 2 subdivision, which is Acorn Place and Timber Ridge.
Have you ever posted signage on properties with wetlands?
We have not. We've... The best way to protect them during construction is silt fence, but once it gets to be two and three years down the road, there's no enforcement. There's no administration to come by and check on that. Also, wetland delineations are only good for five years, so after five years, you think it's a wetland, but it might have moved, it might have shrunk, it might have grown. So, it's a consideration, but to me, it's an enforcement issue.
Is that a discussion area when a realtor sells a house, as far as there is wetland on the property, and you can't change the wetland area? Is that something that realtors are required to do? Or... I guess, I agree. How do you communicate that?
Again, the best way is that note on the plat that shows marshy features, because those show up then on the surveys. They go back to that. That's... And the plat is the record document with the recorder. It shows, "There's a wet spot here. Look out." The only other thing you could do is record the wetland delineation on each lot, but again, it's only good for five years, so...
Right. Kyle?
We do have other examples in town where there are wetlands on lots, and the restriction is really for filling, and that's the way WAC or the Wetland Conservation Act sees that, is filling in the wetlands or altering them. We have some other examples in town where there's wetlands on a lot, and they're mowing them and maintaining them like grass. They're probably a little marshy, but there really is no protection against that.
Okay. Nate?
Maybe you'll answer this question. I'll ask Greg to answer it. The older trees on the lots than they are on Greg's property, correct?
They're on the line, basically. But consideration has been given to those. We've actually moved the sewer, the sanitary sewer, further east in order to try and protect those trees more, because as the neighbors have said, they're of value, and the landowner shares that value.
So, minimal impact on the trees?
As minimal as possible, yeah.
Other questions from council? What's council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Nate to approve.
Second.
Second by Jeff. This being an ordinance, ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Spenvy.
Aye.
Voss.
Aye.
Okaberg.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Six ayes.
Now, we'll move to 3.3.11, the preliminary plat. And just looking for a motion here, Troy.
I think we've explained that situation.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jeff to approve. Second by Dave. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Would Troy have any to add to that?
No.
Now, move on to item 3.3.12, Resolution 2717. It's application number 264 for a lot split at 414 Kelly Street and 393 Sylvan Street. And that also goes together with the next item, Resolution 2817, conditional use number C1390, relocate house to property at 414 Kelly. And we'll go to Troy for this.
Okay, the first request is a lot split. So, currently, it's a large, single-family... Large lot with a single-family house on it that fronts onto Sylvan. The applicant Ellen and Kathy Martin are looking to split the back portion of it, which does front onto a public right-of-way in Kelly Street. Split the back portion off to create its own lot off of Kelly Street. The purpose for doing that is they want to move a house that they currently have on County Road 45, move that to this location. It's a 1959 Ramber that would be placed here. They... Currently, it's... The garage is connected with the house. Due to the topography of the lot, they're proposing to have a tuck-under garage, and then the existing garage would be converted into living space. And the house would be moved to the lot on Kelly through the lot off of Sylvan, so they come up Sylvan and bring it through the existing lot by the house and set it in from that way. There are utilities in Kelly Street that they would access then to provide utilities to the house. We did take it to Planning Commission. We did have a number of neighbors there for this one as well. Brought up a number of concerns with this, and I do think a number of them here would like to speak to that, too. A lot of it revolved around the existing house that's there. It's a rental property right now. There's been a lot of improvements on the inside, but the outside does look like it needs some work. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of the lot split with the condition that the existing house be sided. And then they also did recommend approval of the conditional use permit to move the house into that location. And again, we have a number of neighbors here that would probably like to speak to that as well.
Thank you, Troy. Here again, this isn't normal that we open up the floor, but we know there's a number of neighbors here that are interested in talking about it. I think the Martins are here also. So, I would ask if you have a comment, that you come up to the microphone and sign in. And please limit your comments to two minutes, if you can, and not repeat yourself. So, we'll open the floor up.
Thanks for listening to us, and I'm Patty Abraham Breckie. I live at the adjoining east lot, 446 Riverside Avenue, and the following neighbors and landowners of adjoining and adjacent lots are here. Hands up, guys. And we would just... We all are in opposition of the lot split and the house relocation request, especially as the house at 393 Sylvan Street... We had submitted some pictures to the Planning and Development Commission last Tuesday, but we also are aware that it may be structurally unsound due to the basement collapsed after the windows. New windows were installed in 2012. And then come to find out, checking with the fire department, who normally is supposed to conduct two-year... Every two-year inspections on rental properties for the rental permits. It had not been actually inspected since, like, 2005. And so, we were concerned about that, the structural insoundness, as well as it does look really, really rough. The fact that it concerns us, these apps were approved... If these applications are approved, the additional rental property could eventually deteriorate to the same level as the existing house. And then we're also... How many... We know he owns a lot of other rental properties in town. We're hoping that there's not the same thing going on regarding the inspections not being kept up. We would rather all keep our privacy and see the lot not split, and actually, the new house placed where the existing house is. If it is structurally unsound, why keep it? If they can put that there, it would fit with the neighborhood, the location. It just would seem much more feasible to all of us as well. And anyway, that's kind of our concerns, and we'd appreciate your acting... Hearing acting and addressing them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else wish to speak on this matter?
Helen Martin, County Road 45 South. The house that's on Sylvan should have nothing to do with this, but when I purchased that house a few years back, I don't know many it is, it didn't even have a bathroom in it that a lady had lived there. So, we bought it, put a new bathroom on the main floor, ran the electric, did the electrical updates. We put a new roof on it, and it doesn't look the greatest on the outside. It's got slate siding on, and we put all new windows in, so when the new windows were put in, the siding was damaged, waiting for it to be sided. And my wife brought up the idea that we would side it, you know, to make the neighbors happy. And I have lots of properties in town, which I'm pretty proud of. I have bought several houses in this town and refurbished them to pay more taxes, et cetera. And all I want to do is move my house that I live in and build me a handicap accessible house. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Kevin? Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. No. Okay.
Okay, come on.
My name's Kathy Martin. The... I don't know much about building things, but the basement has not collapsed at Sylvan. There's been a lot of misnomers on this thing. There's nothing wrong with that basement. There's many houses that were built long before that one was, but basements like that are worse, so that really isn't the case. And it doesn't look the best from the outside because they didn't wrap the windows. But I said I'd have the guys side it, and they will do that, even though you probably don't want to make that precedent for in the future. We're just willing to do that to... As a concession to the neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Kathy, is that a concrete block basement or limestone?
I couldn't answer that.
I would know that.
Need to come back up? Please. Yes.
The basement is a mixture of limestone and concrete, where they probably think that it caved in was a coal chute, so we have filled that in, which we have done in several houses that we've bought in that age of housing.
So, you're looking at what, early 1900s construction?
I'm assuming or 1800s, maybe. And a lot of the limestone, they usually backblaster that on the outside, so that looks not the greatest when we re-side, then we redo that. Right over on Glendale, I own two houses, and we just got done with one last fall. We just got done with one two weeks ago. And I'm sure if you drive by those, up on Flor... Flor, there's one I bought several years ago that I bought it on a... years ago that, I bought it on an auction for 30 grand and fixed it up and got 140-some out of it. So when we get to it, you know, that's what I do is buy houses and make them good, look good.
Thank you. Any questions? Al?
In driving by the lot the other Sunday off of Kelly Street, quite a bit of hillside there. I'm assuming you're gonna take some dirt out to get a driveway through there, or if not, what type of grade are you looking at with that driveway?
My first plans was just to move my house in there and have a steep driveway, but talking with the city and engineers, we decided to put the tuck-under garage in it. So the driveway will have, you know, flat with Kelly Street and walls on the side.
So you'll be taking out some materials then from that lot?
I'm sure we would, yes.
Can we ask them questions?
Yeah. Okay. I've been by there a few times, Alan, and I know your house, so it's out of town. It's a very nice place. When I drive through this area, I mean, I think Sylvan Street's a neat little street. The other one is kind of a street, not a street kind of thing. I don't know how that came about, but, I mean, if it were me, I'd want my beautiful house on that Sylvan Street. Is there any reason that you didn't want to do that?
I may build a new house there at one time or whatever. Right now am I, we want to, I've been building a new house on the property I live on for 20 years. This happens to be the year that we hope we get it done.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Connie Elmore and I, we live on Hillside Place, which is just up from Kelly. So that's the only way that we get is up to our places from Kelly. And I just happen to have pictures so that people know that haven't driven by what we're talking about.
Are those ones that were in our packet?
These are, well, there's some new ones with it as well.
Did you sign in?
Some photos.
Did you sign, did you sign in?
I am.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I did drive down, up and down both streets this weekend. I appreciate that the Martins are willing to side the house. I, I think that's, that's something that they're willing to do and I think that's great. I think, and I also drove past their house on Highway 45 this morning. It's a nice-looking house. In my opinion, it will fit in the neighborhood. It's a Rambler, so that will, that will mesh with the rest of the, with the rest of the Al and Kathy have met all of the criteria in regards to, to what needs to be done. It's not the first time that the city has looked at splitting lots. I, I think that's going to be in addition to the neighborhood, not a detriment. And the only question I've got, in looking at the planning commission notes, there was questions in regards to the Martins moving the house on the property and the integrity of the road. I know that we graded our roadways out a couple of years ago. And so my question to Kyle would be, what did those two roads grade out at?
Well, Kelly, it's Kelly, right? Doesn't rate very high, of course. But Sylvan rates a 60. Our average is around a 69. So it's a little bit below average and that would put it into, in overlay category. I don't know exact, I didn't drive it myself with that intent to look at the roadway, but a 60 would indicate that it would be a candidate for overlaying. And I can't say when. It's not, we haven't even developed this year's overlay schedule yet, so we really don't have anything for future years at this time.
Doug? I think this is for Troy. Is there any precedent or minimums or for lot splitting? I don't know the history of splitting lots.
Yeah, this is unusual. This is unusual situation in the fact that, you know, we have a lot that has double frontage on two streets. It's unusual in the fact that Kelly is not your typical street. I mean, you probably don't know it's there unless you live on there or you've visited somebody that lives on there. And so, and having, doing a lot split where an existing house kind of factors in it is unusual as well. So I don't know that we have any precedence similar to this situation. Typically, what the planning commission likes to do is to get a situation that addresses some of the concerns of the neighbors so that it does fit in. And more of the concern was relative to the existing house more so than what's being moved in. Typically, there'll be concerns about what the house is going to look like that's being moved in. This is unusual in the fact that there's more concern about the existing house that's going to stay than there is now. So they, you know, in addressing some, at least the exterior concern, you know, having that, the fact that they agreed to do it is the reason they put it in there, the condition that it does be sided. So I think that was kind of a compromise.
Well, what I'm looking at on the map here, the neighbors too, going uphill, also have very large backyards. Could they apply to split theirs too? Put two more houses on Kelly Street?
Yeah, certainly if they meet the requirements of the minimum lot size, which is always the one that really, I mean, you have to have a lot that is over 18,000 square feet. And if it has double frontage, they certainly have the same ability and rights that the Martins have.
Just to be clear, this side, this split would meet all the legal requirements?
Correct.
If they were, what, the house were to be moved out, how would it be brought in? On Kelly Street or on Sylvan? Do you know the?
I believe they plan on bringing it up Sylvan through the lot.
And through the lot. Does anybody else want to speak about this? Yes, sir.
Anthony Jocelyn. I own two properties directly across from that and 409 and 421. My concern is basically the same concerns that everybody has here as landowners in that area. Letting the Martins put a home in there, there's no way they're going to get around not tearing up Kelly Street. I have pictures here of the city sewer and we're unsure here, we're very unclear on the last meeting that we had. Where are the sewers coming from? It says the north side of the street. It's pretty vague. North side of what street? Obviously, if it's going to be on Kelly, the sewer is going to come in, the water's going to come in off of Kelly Street. These are pictures of the road. Anybody would like to see?
I've been down the road a couple of times.
Yep, yep, but they said, they said it's going to come off the north side of the streets. If they meant the north side of Kelly, that's false, because this is the center of Kelly Street right here. This road is 15 feet across. That's all it is. It's like a oversized runway. There's a substantial amount of dirt, earth that's going to need to be moved out of there and it's a lot, along with the basement that's going to move. I can stand on the road and put my hand up and my hand is probably as tall as the lot is. So that bunch of dirt to put a road in there is going to have to be moved. And this, this is just a picture of that. Here's a picture of that. So they're going to have to tear up this street, no matter what. The neighbors, all of us are concerned how we're getting in and out of this road, once that happens, being it is that narrow as it is. There's a drainage issue there also. And this is a picture of the driveway of the property that's on there now. I don't know how they're going to stop that from washing out. There's such a grade there that it just keeps washing down the hill. Mr. Martin has poured it up there, I think, just to get it to dry out, but there was roots that deep in that driveway on both sides. And the people that live there had to park on the street. And the other neighbors were mad because they were parking on their side of the road. They're on their, they figured it was their property, their parking spots. And addressing the home that's on the property, and I understand Al owns a lot of properties in town and he says he, you know, makes his homes look nice. Well, this home was bought in 2005 and I have the printout of when they bought this. There was never an inspection ever done on this property for the fire marshal. I spoke to him today and, and they did go over there yesterday, I think it was yesterday, they said they went over and they're in compliance as of now. But I could see if you were one guy buying a property and you missed that, you don't be in compliance because you didn't know, you could play dumb. But they own 57 properties in town. They know this. They know that if you have a rental property, you have to abide by the rules that the city puts in place. And that is having your place inspected by the fire marshal every two years. It never happened until yesterday. 2005 until yesterday. And if, and if he's buying homes and he's making his homes look nice, 2005, 2005, this house has sat here like this. And it says here, last week, they didn't do it because of financials, but they can keep buying more and more property, but not fix the one they already have there. That's what me and my neighbors are concerned about. We're not here to stop the Martins. They're good people, I'm not saying they're not. It's just, if I have to comply, so should everybody else have to comply to these rules. Why? You need to permit now, now they're willing to side it. Now they're willing to do the work. They could have did the work a long time ago. I'm not happy with this at all and neither are the neighbors. We know it's going to happen because they can do it, but this needs to be looked at a little bit more clear. Find out where the sewer's coming in, find out who's going to be assessed. And if any assessments are being, anybody gets assessed, it should all be on them. This isn't a city project. This is a Martin project. They tear up that road, all the trucks going in and out of there hauling the dirt away. If they tear up Kelly Street, that shouldn't be on any of us. It should be all etched in stone that they pay those fees. Any damages is on them, not neighbors.
Okay, thank you, sir. Kyle, can you address, do you know where the sewer is there?
It's showing on the map in the packet here. It looks like it's about the center of Kelly Street. It's somewhere in, not in agreement, so.
What's that?
Yeah. The center of Kelly.
So they will have to connect to that.
And the water's there also. So they will have to dig into the middle of the street to extend the sewer and the water in. And that's fairly common.
We have rules in place for that.
Yes. They have to have access.
How do you deal with the access for the other property owners on that street while it's torn up?
You know, it's less than a day of disturbance to getting it back, so I expect they'll be able to keep everybody coming in the way they do now. There'll be, there'll be a short inconvenience.
Is that street on any of the lists for being upgraded in the future?
It's in poor shape now. Excuse me, it's in poor shape now. We, you know, it's, it's really not a street that was on a high priority list, so I don't, we didn't have any plans for it.
But at the end, end of the day, this is a legal lot split and a legal use of their property.
Great.
Yes.
And I would add, you know, given we got the recommendation from planning, there is nothing non-conforming to this. And I would agree with Mr. Martin, the other house really shouldn't come into consideration what shape it's in. I don't really like putting a condition on a relatively unrelated item. But purely out of self-interest, I'm sure they are going to want that house to look better when they live next to it. It's self-serving, but it's a fact. What's that? We don't know that either way, but I assume if they're going to live there, they want it to look nicer because they're concerned about their property value.
Okay, okay, that, we've had discussion.
We don't know about that. So my point is if they're living next to that house, I can safely assume they want it to look nice. So if that's the case, that's, that would be good for purely personal reasons. So with that being said, I would make a motion to approve without the condition that they side the other house. I think it's very gracious if you will do that, but I don't like attaching conditions that might create problems in other areas if we have something like this in the future. If they say, well, you forced someone to do something unrelated, well, you do it here too. I don't really like that.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve Resolution 2717, application 264 for the lot split at 414 Kelly Street and 393 Sylvan, without the condition of reciding the house that's existing.
Correct. Do I hear a second for that?
Second.
Second by Jeff Ogbert. Any further discussion on this matter? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the Resolution 2817, conditional use number C1390 to relocate the house to property, the property of 414 Kelly Street. We've had a lengthy discussion about that now. What are the council's wishes on this matter?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin to approve Resolution 2817. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion? Brent?
I have a question for Kyle. Kyle, as part of their moving permit to move the house on the property, they have to lay out their route they're moving the house and how they're getting to the property?
Certainly. That'll be part of the approval process and that's actually handled through building and inspection, but they have to go through and notify, there's 10 or 12 notifications that they have to make in order to make that move. So once, once they have the approval to do that, they'll be required to go through the moving permit process.
Are they responsible for the damages they do for roadways or?
Certainly. And I assume they're hiring a professional mover and we haven't had any issues with, well, with our stuff. A mover hit a tree with the house once, but that was their own damage, so.
Any further discussion, Nate?
And I would just ask Kyle, and you can confirm that no adjoining property owners would be assessed for anything with regard to this project?
Well, not because of this project. You know, like I mentioned earlier, Kelly Street is in poor condition. It's not something we had on our, quite honestly, I really, I knew it was there, but I had never really been up it until this came up. It's, it wouldn't be a high priority project, but you know, if we were petitioned or asked by the neighbors, we'd do an improvement project in there. It only serves, is it three or four? Three now, it'll be four? So it wouldn't make a high priority.
And I guess I would suggest the property owners talk to the engineer about the condition of the roadway if it's worth considering.
And that's a reconstruction. You know, we certainly maintain any potholes or any, our normal maintenance.
But beyond an overlay regardless?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next we go to miscellaneous items. The first item is 3.4.1, approval of plans and authorization to bid for sanitary sewer lining and we'll go to Kyle for this.
This is the annual sewer lining project. We've increased our budget three or four years ago to expand the lining program. We've been targeting around 20,000 feet or almost five miles of lining. We have 21,000 feet identified this year with an estimated cost of about $480,000. This will be largely the area by cedar. We had some issues down in that sewer shed, down by the old hospital this last September, so we're going to finish all the unlined or sections that aren't either PVC or lined, we're going to finish out that area. We're also looking at a section of Moser 18th up through Kaplan's Woods and then into the backside of, kind of down by the VFW. It's been another problem area, so we're going to be lining those areas and we recommend approval.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Any questions of Kyle on this?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin to approve. Do I have a second?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is 3.4.2, approval of plans and authorization to bid for the wastewater treatment plant bar screen. And we'll go back to Kyle for this.
During the flood event in September, our bar screen, which is the first, as the wastewater comes into the plant, it removes the larger items, was damaged. We've been working on getting it repaired since that time. It is covered by our city insurance trust, and deductible of $25,000 is being paid by FEMA reimbursement. One thing that we are, it's taken a little longer. We had it evaluated because the same damage occurred in 2010. So it was installed in 2009. It was damaged in 2010, and it was damaged again in 2016. So we are looking at other options, and we're going to be bidding it with a repair as one option, and a replacement with different technology as another. So the cost to the city would be, our insurance and FEMA will only cover to replace what we have. If we elect to go to a different system and there's an additional cost, that would be a city responsibility. So once we get those bids back and know, I will make a recommendation on what to do with that.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions of Kyle?
So if it's a replacement, you'll come back to council on that?
We'll come back with the bids either way. So there's going to be alternate, there'll be alternate one, or alternate A, or alternate B, and we'll make a recommendation at that time whether to repair or to replace.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? For a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion by Nate to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 3.4.3, approval of plans and authorization to bid for the North Straight River Trail project. I think we have Corky here today. No? Kyle?
Nope, I'm Corky. Corky's still here.
Yeah, Corky will help.
Corky's still here, okay, so Corky's going to talk about it.
With the difficult parts. As you know, we received a grant in the amount of $392,250 from the TAP program or the Transportation Alternative Program. And in addition, another DNR trail grant in the amount of $139,000 totaling $531,000 to pave the North Straight River Trail from North Street to 26th Street. We have gone through, the grants only cover construction costs, so we have in-house developed the plans and specifications, and we're ready to take those out to bid. The proposed bid date, excuse me, is April 12th, and then we would be bringing those bids to council on April 18th. The estimated cost today is $570,000, so there is a little bit of a shortfall. We also have some testing and construction-related costs that we cannot do in-house, and we're estimating those at about $25,000. So we're projecting a shortfall of about $65,000 on this. But it is a good project, and we don't bid trails or access, with access like this very often, so we've added some contingencies into the plan for that. We don't know if it's enough, but we feel we've given a fair estimate of cost. But we don't actually know until we get the bids in. So with that, we're recommending approval.
Thank you, Kyle. Brent, have a question?
Question for Corky. We're planning for lighting along the trail, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And that's in these specs and stuff?
It is, LED lighting. We've worked with OPU, because they will be taking over that lighting. It is being bid as an alternate in case we do come up short. However, lighting is something we definitely want to get done on this, so.
Because I think we always talk about having that trail lighted if we ever get to.
Yes, that's part of the grant, and so we've listed as an alternate if we'd have to come back and do some in-house work on installation of those. So we've listed a couple of alternates there on the installation of the lighting along there. It does need to be completed, and so if we need to address that, and if there's some things we can do to make it, or we can do it in-house, we might consider that. And then if the bidding comes in favorably, obviously we won't be here. If it doesn't come in favorably, that's why we're getting the grant done prior to May 1st, because there's a deadline on a grant that we'll be applying for in case of the shortfall. There's no guarantee of it. We've met with that group previously last fall on this project, and wanted to see it go to bid first. They've granted a lot of money towards this project already, and, but we're very interested once it got down to the details of it, and so we're fairly confident with that. If all else fails through, and it is short, we're going to have to work with Ron and Chris on our CIP plan and do some adjustments inside of that to make it work. So we got three combinations, well, four actually. First, let's see what the bids come in at. Secondly, we look at the alternates. If there's something we can do in-house possibly, if not, in time, hopefully in time enough to us to get a grant together quick before May 1st and get that submitted. And then last resort would be then to try to adjust our CIP if we need to, to complete the project.
So in a perfect world, if everything goes right, hopefully the trail will be done by fall?
It will be done. So it's a federal project, and there is a mountain of paperwork.
With a deadline?
Well, I'm tired of paperwork.
Kevin, you have a question?
Yeah, in regards to the trail and, you know, talking about the 18th Street Trail, is this a type of grant that is for new trail as well? So if we're looking at potentially someday going up 18th Street, would that new trail qualify for this type of granting?
Kyle's the TAP grant guy. He kind of led us into this, and maybe regrets that he did, but we do, number one, appreciate all the engineering department. They've got us, got us involved with the TAP grant, and through our department and Kyle's department, we worked together to get the grant, which was great to see done. And now the work really comes in, the engineering part's easy, the planning part of it, it's the paperwork part that it seems like I'm reading into it, that's the nightmare, and you hear that all the time on these federal grants. So I'm sure there's probably TAP grants out there with that, you know, they're competitive, surely can be put in there. Trail connection grants with the DNR, they're smaller in scope, but, you know, in that $100, $150,000 range. And so, yeah, there's grants available, and once this project gets completed, that is our, our next step is to evaluate where we're going to try to grant money for next in the trail system.
Okay, thank you. Nate?
There's a couple things. So number one, so we've got about $180,000, neither out of pocket or in kind labor, we assume, correct? Between the shortfall and the engineering?
Well, the engineering is covered out of our budget.
Okay. And obviously, as my concern always is, is as we add more things, we have more to maintain. Are you confident with the staff we've got that we can continue to expand that system and maintain it as we need to?
Yes, yes, definitely. It's lowest on our priority list. Sometimes it might become a matter of time when things get cleared, which sometimes we feel that we spoil people on keeping our trails cleared, but we have so many pieces of big equipment, so we work with the street department, making sure our streets are cleared first. Sidewalks fall right behind that. We've got the 24-hour period, getting that clean, and that becomes a priority. And then third comes into our trails, keeping those cleared along with ice or ski trails, and those all kind of bundled together after those two are completed. So as far as winter, yes, you know, it's just a matter of timing when it gets done. And then the summer, it's, you know, you can't say it's not going to add some cost to it, definitely, but with the staff we have, yes, there's not a whole lot to it other than when it gets to overlays and those kind of things, when the big costs show up.
Thank you. Any other questions? Motion by Brent to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That ends our action items. Now we go to public comment. If anyone's in the audience, please, if it has a comment to make, please come forward to the microphone and sign in, and please limit your comments to two minutes or less and not, and not to items on the agenda. Guess we have no one tonight, so we'll go to council comments. Dave, you're first up.
Nothing to add tonight.
Nothing to add tonight, okay. Kevin?
I have nothing to add this evening.
Brent?
Nothing this evening.
Doug?
Nothing, thank you.
All right, so good night. Jeff?
Nothing to add.
Nate?
I guess I will just add, I'll thank Leanne for roping us into the hospice house basketball game.
How did that go? How did that all go?
Our team won, so, well.
You had two six-man guys.
Doug was on the losing end.
I heard the mayor hung on the rim when he dunked.
Totally did. Yeah, so we beat Doug's team.
You had Kareem Abdul-Jabbar on your team, too, actually.
Yeah, it was, it had nothing to do with me being on the team, but we won, so it was a good event, come on next year.
Good. Mr. Mayor?
You know, I think tonight just speaks well of Otona and Otona citizens. There was a lot of controversial items that were on our docket tonight, and everybody really kept their composure very, very well, so my thanks to the Otona citizens and the fine job they do.
I agree wholeheartedly. Chris?
Nothing from me.
Nothing for you and nothing for me, so I guess I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Kevin to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Second by Nate. I'm assuming there's no discussion on that, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we're done. Thank you, everyone.